Stop sharing.
Good evening. I called to order the February meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission. Certainly want to welcome the commissioners that visiting by way of television and we have a couple of guests. I know that Mr. Patel is going to be joining us and we have a new commissioner, which I have not had a chance to meet. She will be monitoring this event tonight. Her name is Ms. Vanessa Murray and we're excited to have her on board and look forward to getting to know her better. As far as I know, we have Ms. Murray, Ms. Hines, Mr. Patel, Mr. Howard and Ms. Greg via her cellphone. I am here, so we have forum. So I will begin.
Mr. McCote.
Hello?
Mr. McCote is here.
McCote, I did not have that here because I was going to ask you or Mr. Moses to do the invocation. So I'll let y'all decide which one that will be.
I'll do it tonight.
And who was that?
McCote.
Okay, okay. Thank you. We will begin when you say.
Okay, let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we ask that you bless this mandated body that has been given the task of dealing with comprehensive plans, zoning ordinances and subdivision ordinances, which allows this body to make recommendations to the elected officials on proposed changes. Now Lord, we ask that you bless each and every one of us, allowing us to do what is in the best interest of the community and pleasing in the sight of our God. We ask this now in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. A God-given gift and we're just glad to have you on board. Thank you very much for that. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes. The commissioners have received their packet, had a chance to go through the minutes. If there are no changes, recommendations or comments, I call for a motion.
Approve it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Signs nay. The ayes have it, passed unanimously. We have a gentleman on line with us and staff, share with me who that is. Sir with the hat, can you identify yourself, please? Okay. Okay, all right. Well, we'll move on. All right, minutes have been approved. The next item is PC 2021 dash two. This is a request to zone NC dash six point one pending annexation. Staff report, please, and good evening. Good.
Yeah, you know what that is? I can't see.
I'm sorry, repeat that, please?
Oh, Lord, I'm sorry. I can't see. I still can't see.
I think we have a guest that's trying to get online.
Yes.
All right, we will continue. Staff report, please.
All right, this is a simple annexation request for a single-family house located on Kalmar Parkway, at the corner of Kalmar Parkway and High Hampton Road. It is, as I said, a house. Contingency is provided by houses across the street from it. The applicant just wants to receive services. It would be zoned NC six point one, just like the other houses around it. And the future land use for it is neighborhood conservation. And it does meet all the requirements for an NC six point one parcel. So here's a picture of the house and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, staff. Commissioner, do you have any questions of staff regarding this request? Hearing none, I will move to the public hearing portion of this. And I will open to anyone that is visiting by way of television to either speak for or against this request. Again, this is a request pending annexation to zone NC dash six point one. Are there any, is there anyone that wants to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Like signs nay. Hearing no nays, it passes unanimously. Next item, this is PC 2021 dash oh three. This is a request to rezone from NC dash six point one to CG. This involves three parcels on Oakland Avenue. Good evening, sir.
Hey, good evening.
Staff report, please. Everybody's good?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody.
Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, I'm just getting the PowerPoint presentation ready if you'll bear with me for just one sec.
Every now and then I'm getting kicked offline.
What?
Thank you for bearing with us, everybody.
Every now and then I'm getting kicked off.
Is that Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. IT man, did you hear that? Mr. Moses is getting kicked off. Okay, Mr. Moses, it has something to do with your internet on your end.
Okay, I'll come in by my phone there.
Okay, all right, staff report, please.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your patience, everybody. So this is their request to rezone from Neighborhood Conservation six point one to Commercial General. Three parcels located at around nine hundred Oakland Avenue. So here is the vicinity map. This is the corner of Oakland Avenue and Maxwell Street. And these are the three parcels involved in the rezoning request. Here's a little bit closer view. There is an existing convenience store on the site which fronts Oakland Avenue. And as you can see from the pictures, the three parcels that are going to be rezoned, they're actually separated by a thin alleyway that comes off of Maxwell Street. The owner would like to combine these parcels in the future, but that would be up to the governing body to abandon this alleyway. It's a DOT street. The city may also have some sort of say, in the abandoned, so that I just wanted to put that out front, that that will be an obstacle for that. So here's the current zoning map. This is NC six point one, it's along Oakland Avenue and Maxwell Street. Here is the future land use map, which is Neighborhood Conservation. And right across the street from these parcels is the city Iowa Jones Park. Here is, prior to the Unified Development Ordinance, these parcels were zoned B two. So in the translation from the old ordinance to the current Unified Development Ordinance, instead of being zoned commercial reuse, which would have been a direct translation, it was translated to Neighborhood Conservation. And we think that might have something to do with the algorithm and the sizes of the lots when it was recoding everything. So here are some current site photos. Behind the current convenience store is six oh seven Maxwell Street. It appears to be, or was, an auto repair shop. So that is one of the parcels involved. Then you have the back of the convenience store on the picture on the right. And in the background is Oakland Avenue. You can see a car in the background. And this is the front of the convenience store, which is my understanding, the owner passed away a couple of months ago and sold this property to Mr. Patel. So the convenience store was down for a couple of months. And then Mr. Patel came in and wanted to continue that existing use. So it is currently permitted as a convenience store. And here's some shots from the front, and it also has a vacant lot to the side, which is also included in this rezoning request. So as it is zoned now, Neighborhood Conservation point one, the only thing permitted to be built there would be a single-family detached home. There would be very limited commercial uses as it is currently zoned. And here is a comparison of Commercial General, which was initially what the applicant requested. And after speaking to the city, we and he feel that commercial reuse would be more appropriate in this area. So Commercial General, the minimum lot width would have to be two hundred feet, which would be a problem because he's only got about a hundred feet of street frontage and large setbacks in the front of fifty feet, twenty feet on the side. And he would very quickly run out of room for his initial, he initially wanted to put in a gas station. But after reviewing the numbers, there's just not enough space. So the city recommending commercial reuse has only a fifty-foot lot width, which is doable, and smaller setbacks. Here is a comparison of the use charts for Commercial General and what the city is recommending commercial reuse. So the commercial reuse is CR. And that would allow things like, what the arrows are pointing to, commercial retail, which is what it is currently operating now, the grocery store, convenience store. And it would also allow things like office space, general professional office space. And then on the other hand, Commercial General, it would have allowed things like alcoholic beverage sales for off-site consumption, onsite consumption conditionally. And a gas station would have been allowed, meeting certain conditions. And also specialty uses like places that sell, like vape shops, tobacco, title loans, checking the cash, places like that would have been permitted in Commercial General. Again, the city is recommending the CR zoning designation, where the liquor store would not be allowed, it would not be permitted. But since Mr. Patel is carrying on an existing use, beer and wine will still be allowed to continue at that location. Here are some, so where the parcels are highlighted all around there, if this lot were redeveloped, as Mr. Patel wants to do in the future, he would like, future plans are to build a new convenience store, put all these parcels together, build a convenience store, and that convenience store would have to be built to current zoning standards, where buffer yards would be required around this property to shield single-family residences. So here's a comparison of the buffer yard for Commercial General. Initially, the gas station would have required a type D buffer yard. So we're talking a forty-foot width of trees and shrubs and different landscaping, which was not doable. But the commercial reuse does still require a buffer yard if this lot is redeveloped into a convenience store, the type B buffer yard with the ten-foot width. The CR district, which is what the city is recommending, the convenience store, it's conditionally permitted. And it is currently permitted now as an existing non-complomity. And it does have limited sale of beer and wine, and that is associated with a convenience or grocery store. So it can't just be predominantly beer and wine. It is an accessory, the main use, which is a grocery, a convenience store. Liquor sales would not be permitted in the CR district. And a gas station would not be permitted in what the city is recommending. This is, as we said, it was historically zoned B two, which directly translates into the CR in our new ordinance that changed in 2018. And that does allow small-scale commercial uses, less restrictive setbacks and smaller buffer yards. So for those reasons, the city would recommend commercial reuse zoning. And the applicant, after speaking with him, is in agreement. And it is his intention to continue the convenience store as is and hopefully develop a new building, a new convenience store in the future, meeting new zoning standards of parking, landscaping, buffer yards and setbacks as well. And that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, commissioners, any questions of staff? Well, he's up front. Mr. Howard? Your volume is off, Mr. Howard.
All right, so we're looking at, are we looking at all three lots? Even though the alleyway is there and you still have to get some additional approvals to have that?
That's right. If he wants to do a summary flat, the city will have to approve it. And those alleyways will have to be abandoned by the governing body. And only then would he be able to redevelop a new convenience store.
And so the combined square footage of those three lots would be what?
It's about a hundred foot along Oakland Avenue, the width, and then about two hundred and five feet in depth, thereabouts. And that includes the alleyways. And then when he, once those alleyways are abandoned, you know, they'll have, that property will have to be divided evenly or there has to be some sort of agreement between the adjacent property owners about divvying of that land. So that will definitely be negotiated, since Mr. Patel will have to have the neighbors.
Okay. Any other questions from staff? I mean, excuse me, from commissions?
Yes, I don't understand you to say that the gas station or the liquor store would be permitted on that property?
That's exactly right. If planning commission recommends commercial reuse and it's approved by two readings of council, a liquor store and a gas station would not be permitted.
That's one of my concerns, especially the liquor store.
Yes, sir.
Because there's one, actually where that property is, it's about five minutes walking distance from that property. There's already an existing liquor store there. And the last thing, that residential area near knees is another liquor store in that vicinity.
Yes, sir.
Any other question? Mr. Moses? You are muted, Mr. Moses. Hold on a second. Is that his doing or yours? Mr. Moses, you're muted. Yourself.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Greg?
Can y'all hear me? This is Danielle Davis.
Oh, Danielle.
Yes, I'm one of the neighboring folks in this neighborhood.
That's it. Well, I will open the public hearing portion in just a minute. If you'll just hold on.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Okay, thank you for participating, by the way. All right, Mr. Moses, have you been able to unmute?
Unmute. Okay, can you hear me now?
We got you now.
My concern is the park. And convenience store there, we having a lot of problems there already with just that little convenience store there. I'm concerned that people, that kids and all playing on the park, we that convenience stores was going to open up, they're going to have beer and wine there. And I don't see where we should allow that there. And then plus, we going to add a lot of traffic there. Which now, if you go there from the Oakland Avenue, when you try to get off of Rough Road, Rough Road Street, it take you at least ten or fifteen minutes just to make a turn across the street. And I say that we creating a problem there. It would be nice for him to build single-family houses there. And I don't see where we could zone it. I'd be like to put it to be a B two.
If I am correct, and I asked staff to approve this or correct me, it is grandfather and he, Mr. Patel can continue to run that store under the circumstances now. If he tears it down, it's no longer grandfather. Is that correct? And if he builds new, but so tonight, we're trying to decide if it's going to be commercial reuse, which is equivalent to the B two, which in our old system allowed for convenience stores. So Mr. Patel buying the business from the deceased owner to continue to run this business. And we as commissioners and city council really don't have any control of that, if I am correct.
That is correct. The current owner presented records to show that it had continued operation, you know, and met the requirements of the code to reopen. So he has been granted a continuance to operate as it is there. But he's, the ordinance does prevent, allow him to make certain improvements to the site. If they surpass a certain threshold, he would have to meet certain code. Or if he completely tears down the building and rebuilds, he would have to meet the current code, which is single-family. So, but he is allowed to operate the current business as is, yes.
Mr. Moses, did you, did you hear that?
Yes, I heard all that. Yes, the main goal is if he tear it down, he can't build a convenience store back. Am I right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Staff is saying that is correct.
All right.
And if he does what he wants to do in redevelopment, if we do recommend the CR zoning district, he will have to build it to current standards. Landscaping, parking, including, you know, a three-foot buffer surrounding the parking lot to keep the headlights from shining across the street.
Any other questions from commissioners before I open up the public hearing?
Yes, I have a question.
Ms. Hines, yes?
You've talked about what the city is recommending. Did I hear you say, or is he going to request a change to what the city has recommended? Are we still looking at what he is asking for?
I didn't follow that.
Okay, I think that the applicant has, we've spoken with the applicant and he sees that the Commercial General and these lots would not work for his purposes. So now we're in agreement that the CR zoning designation would be the best recommendation to city council.
And that's what the city has recommended, right?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
But as it stands now, he can continue selling the beer and the wine. Say if he didn't change anything at all, right now, he still could continue to sell the beer and wine.
That's exactly right. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? I know we have several guests on. I will open the public hearing portion of this. I will ask that if you're speaking in favor or against this, please let us know. I ask that you also introduce yourself, full name. And I'm going to start with those that either have questions or are calling in against this request first. So Mr. Patel will have a chance to respond. I know that we had a guest that introduced herself briefly. Ma'am, are you still on?
I believe it was Mrs. Davis.
He said Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
So they muted themselves, sir?
Hello?
Yes.
This is Danielle Davis. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Spell your last name for me, please.
Yeah. D A B I S.
That's kind of like Bud. Can you spell that for me?
D A B I S.
Yes, ma'am. Miss Davis, I'm sorry. I didn't understand you the first time. And, but yes.
That's okay.
Welcome. Thank you for participating tonight. And if you would like to speak, we invite you to.
Great, thank you. Now, I am Danielle Davis, one of the neighbors to the store. I've grown up in this neighborhood from a child and now I'm an adult with my own grant. Now, several of the neighbors, family, friends have asked that I speak on their behalf. And again, I want to thank you for this opportunity. Our concern is, we are asking for clarification as to why this request was being made. And you've answered quite a few, but I'm just going to read what I have here, if you don't mind. It says, "We are asking for clarification on why this request is being made and to what capacity the changes would affect our community." Our concern is that the changes from NF to CC would allow the owners to turn the store into a liquor store, which would then lead to additional problems for our community and the surrounding area, such as our homes, the Iowa Jones Park, our churches, daycares and our schools. It is very important to us here in this North Florence area that it not be changed in order to ensure that this won't happen now or in the future. If, and when the time comes and they have new owners. However, if the zoning is passed, what guarantees do we have that the future developments by new owners won't turn into what this community does not need, which is another liquor store, club or bar? And that's it for me.
Well, Ms. Davis, thank you very much. That was a lot to respond to. If you heard the staff members, Mr. Johnston, he said that in the future, if Mr. Patel decides to tear this down and build a newer, better facility, he cannot put a liquor store there or a gas access. So at best, it would dress up what is there currently. And currently, Mr. Patel is grandfathered in. And currently, Mr. Patel is grandfathered in, meaning
Yes, I did hear that.
Right.
But what about future owners if the if it changes ownership?
It will not change what our zoning designation is if we elect change it to commercial reuse or CR. The limitations will carry on through owner to owner to owner. And they cannot put a liquor store or a gas station there.
Okay, all right. Now, how is that information going to get out so that our community will understand it and not just a yellow sign sitting in the front? How will they know and feel more secure that this is these changes won't affect us in that way?
That's a great question, and I'm gonna ask staff to respond to that.
Well, we, I mean, obviously, we have these public hearings, so so folks can tune in. And we've had a number of phone calls about this today, and we've given individuals a link to watch this live. So hopefully, we have a number of individuals that are are either participating and or watching this live currently. And we also, you know, make an effort through our community, through some of our contacts in the community. We go to neighborhood watch programs, and we have liaisons within our communities. And we'd be glad to put the word out through through that network as well. And any suggestions that come in from the community as well. I know, I know the churches in in North Florence are a very tight group, too. And we have some connections within the churches, so we could pass it along through that route as well.
That would be, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak with questions or against this request? Hearing none, I will open it up to anyone that wants to speak in favor of this. Mr. Patel, you're welcome to participate if you'd like. Or you, go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Patel, how are you, sir?
Yeah, good. My, it's my father-in-law, Raj. So I'm just speaking, he's on. Hearing the concerns of the folks on on the line, you know, our intent, as Mr. it is to simply take base and, you know, present a new bill. It's currently a eyesore where it is. Get a little bit back and and build a new building and still service the same way by providing groceries. You know, groceries, beer. Echo leave, or we have zero intent to make store or a club or anything like that where our basically take what the store was doing, you know, when and, you know, just turn it into a little bit bigger and, you know, give the community a place where they can buy groceries, beer, wine, tobacco, etc.
And food, and food.
Yeah, and potentially a small kitchen serving, you know, breakfast and lunch.
I have a question, Mr. Patel, not for you, but for staff. Nightclubs and bars, discotheques, that's not allowed there under the CR?
Right, yeah, no nightclubs or or bars would be allowed at that location. Now, private clubs, as regulated by the state, are allowed in many zoning districts. And we often don't control those. But they are heavily regulated by SLID and such, you know, such groups as that. But bars and clubs or nightclubs, disco music, discotheques, nothing of that nature would be permitted there. Thank you.
And just to be, just to be clear, in our application with the state, we have, like, like the gentleman just mentioned, we have not applied for a private club or anything like that. It's truly a, you know, a convenience store.
Thank you. Do any of the
And Washington, get it, but excuse me, might be Washington. Might be I do the was right over there in a one building, might be.
Yeah, down the down the line that we currently have, you know, three, three parcels of land or potential other future growth opportunity is to take the second building that that was shown earlier on this screen, which is the which is a garage and potentially turn that into a laundryman or something of that sorts. But that's obviously, that's not to be that's nothing final. Right now, we're just simply wanting to redo it for a, you know, a convenience store. But that's more of a down the line potential, if that's something that interested the community.
All right, any commissioners with further questions? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this. And call for a motion.
I I'd make a motion. I think that I I hear the the concern of the community and appreciate the concern of the community. I think the applicant is protected by buying an existing business and and so is able to carry on that business. And it sounds like to me that his intention is to put some money into the facility and improve it. And and which would hopefully sort of have a an improvement to the area. So I would make a motion because I think he's entitled to maintain that current business. But that's sort of outside of our scope. I would make a motion that we approve the the request to rezone and and move forward.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? That is to as requested, the CR. A women, Mr. Mr. Howard, we are requesting to zone to CR, which is commercial reuse.
Yes.
Right, okay.
That was, that was the request.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, okay.
Miss Elaine was just trying to clarify that for notes.
Yeah, the the original request was for CG. However, staff recommends CR. So just just be clear, the the motion is for CR.
Right.
Which the applicant is now requesting CR, correct?
That's correct. They have agreed with staff on that, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's right.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hines. I have a motion and a second to approve as requested. Open it up for discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And like signs nay.
Nay.
One nay, is that correct? I have ayes and one nay.
Moses, nay.
I'm sorry to keep you.
Mr. Moses, a negative.
Right. All right, so that does pass, Mr. Patel. This will go to city council. They will make the final decision on this, and we appreciate your participation tonight. All right, next item is PC twenty twenty one dash oh four. This is a request rezoned from CR to CG. Miss Elaine, staff report, please.
Thank you. All right, yes, this is a bit of the reverse of what we just had. This is concerns Bella Dentistry, which is a new construction on the intersection of Fairlane Drive and Second Loop Road. It's across from the old Piggly Wiggly grocery store there. And the Bella Dentistry includes two parcels. But they are working on, they've developed the first one right on the corner, parcel double oh eight, which has been highlighted here, and that is the only one that's involved in this rezoning request. The two parcels were zoned commercial reuse, which does allow the dental office. And then is surrounded to the north by NC fifteen, which is the single family residential. And then on the other two sides by commercial general. The request is to zone to commercial general for the purpose of having the option of increased signage. And the CR, the largest freestanding sign that they can have is a twenty square foot sign. They currently do have a monument sign that has two ten square foot panels, one for each of those two parcels that they share. And they right now only have the one. I thought I was, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was sharing it.
A brief pause.
They were assuming we have that a lot tonight. Where's the?
Go back to zoom. There you go. Click on the I'd like to share screen.
You think we know this by now? There we go. Apologize, you think we know this by now? I will go back then, these, the two parcels that are the zone, the CR, and it's only the one that has the letter CR on it, the six oh seven. And the signage permitted for the CR is only twenty square feet, and they are already using that footage. They pointed out that next door or two doors down at five oh one Second Loop Road, the Anderson Brothers Bank has the much larger freestanding sign. They have not given me any specifics yet. It sounds like they just want the option to go to a larger sign in the future. So they, if they did do that, we recommended that they would have to beef up their buffering. Right now, they have adequate buffering that's required, as we just saw, between the commercial reuse and residential. And we are proposing that if they did put a larger sign up there, that they would beef up their landscaping a little bit to ensure that there's no light spill over into the residential areas. But that would have to be addressed when they, when and if they came forward with a specific proposal. So that is the purpose for the request for this rezoning.
All right, commissioners, any questions for staff? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing portion of this. If anyone would like to speak for or against this request, you're welcome to do so at this time. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Motion, a second to approve as requested or as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs nay. It passes unanimously and that is the end of our agenda. And any new business, old business, Mr. Dudley, that we need to discuss?
Um, I I will mention that the South Carolina American Planning Association is having their winter conference coming up, and I will forward out to all the commissioners. It's an opportunity to get some training that would count towards your annual training. I'll forward that out. I think there's a small fee that the city could cover that as as part of your training requirement, if you're interested. Just let me know. I believe it is the seventeenth of
But it's here or in Columbia?
It's virtual. So so which is why it's a very good opportunity for us all to to attend if if we can make the time to to attend a couple of sessions to get your credits in. So we'll, we'll send that information out to everybody. The, I think we've got to be registered by the fifteenth. So you'd need to let me know, you know, by the end of the week. But I'll, we'll forward that out to everyone, and I can get you signed up if you're interested. And we're also, I know I've been talking about getting started with the comprehensive plan again. We do have another tentative schedule, which will start with some virtual workshops, starting the end of February, the beginning of of March. We are just getting the dates firmed up for the the last week of February to maybe do another virtual workshops. We will, I'll forward that out to all the commissioners once we firm that up. So as well as the remainder of the schedule. But with COVID, we'll get started with virtual workshops and hopefully transition into some in-person stuff before too long, as as the world recovers and the vaccine rolls out, so.
Absolutely.
And that we're all praying for.
Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Moses? I'll ask for your
I moved that we adjourned.
Y'all have a good evening, and thank you, and look forward to seeing you next month.